The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. We're going to have a moment of silence and then followed by a pledge allegiance. Please join us.
Now for the pledge of allegiance, ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, could you please roll call?
Commissioner Basara?
Aye.
Commissioner Casianos?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Chair Heng?
Here.
As the record show, all planning commissioners are present.
Tonight, we have minutes from the regular meeting on January 28, 2025. Does anyone have any amendments to the minutes? If there's none, the minutes are... No? Okay. There's none, the minutes are approved as presented. Now, we have oral communications. Would anyone like to speak on any items that is not on agenda? Joanne, do we have any card? No? Okay, for the consent calendar, tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull this matter from the consent calendar for discussions or would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Oh, that's...
A second.
Consent calendar?
Yeah, we didn't pull it.
Okay.
Roll call. Vice Chair Basara?
Aye.
Commissioner Casianos?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Heng?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And moving on to public hearings, tonight, we have one public hearing. Joanne, will you present the item?
So, this item is for a hospital addition at 725 South Orange. The alternate address, 741 South Orange. The project requires a precise plan. For the site plan and architectural review, a conditional use permit is required for the hospital use. A variance is required because a site with the proposed construction does not comply with the required number of off-street parking spaces. And a tree room permit is required for the removal of 25 significant trees onsite. And the 25 significant trees is based on its location because it's in front of the building and it's not based on species in particular. The project site is located on the northeast of South Orange Avenue and the West Cameron Avenue intersection, just south of the Interstate 10 freeway. The site is the existing medical, West Covina Medical Center. It encompasses a hospital and also a medical office building. And note that as part of the project, the carport at the... On the... Just on the west side of the property will be removed. And this is to accommodate for the fire department's conditions of approval to require... In order to allow their emergency... Their fire trucks or fire engines to be able to turn around on an off-site. The site is abutting floor and decor just south. The park... The parking lot that's utilized by the West Covina Medical Center to the west and a office building also to the west. And just east of the site is the Interstate 10 freeway. The hospital addition will be located just east of the existing medical office building attached to the one-story portion of the building itself. And it is locate... And it is the area that's highlighted in purple on the site plan. The site is accessed from South Orange Avenue via driveway. There is an existing driveway onsite and the... From the site, from the side entrance, you can... Vehicle can go about two ways, to the patient drop-off area, which is a covered area, or to the rear, which leads to the ambulance base and also the staff parking. There are 12 staff parking areas provided on the site and a total of six handicap parking spaces onsite as well. And as far as circulation is concerned, leaving the site, as I mentioned earlier, there is going to be a turnaround area for the fire engines just to the west side of the site where the existing carports are located. The site is a four-story building. Or the project is a four-story building. The maximum height is 70 feet tall. And it... The site is part of the downtown planning code area. And for the urban center zone, the maximum height is 70 feet. So, the project does comply with the 70-foot maximum height allowed in the downtown planning code area. The design of the... The architectural style of the building will match the existing building that is there. It'll have similar color details. It'll have stucco and beige and white or beige stucco with gray details and aluminum More of the building elevations for the site. The area that is shown on the top photograph is actually the... What is going to be visible from the street along Orange. And then, this view right here is along... Near the ambulance bay along the side and also the rear. The first floor of the project will have the utility equipment area, the fire pump, riser, stairs, the staff locker room and lounge area, the kitchen, the generator mechanical room area, the ambulance bay dock, receiving... The area for receiving patients and also the lobby and waiting room area. The second floor will have the beds. The total configuration... The project will have a total of 71 beds. The second floor will be mainly used for the patients with patient beds and also the nursing station centrally located with the exam rooms, seclusion rooms, and storage rooms, and also the staff restrooms. This... The area to the left in pink will be the consultation and the conference room that is located near the elevator area. And at the... The orange area, the bottom, is the group therapy dining room or recreational room area and indoor activity space. On the third floor... The third floor will have a similar configuration, except that there is the triangular... The green triangular area right along here would be the outdoor activity space, which is open from... Which has an open roofed area so that the patients would be able to enjoy or have outdoor And the fourth floor also has similar configuration, except that the outdoor activity area is on the other side to the square area on the other side of the building. So, as far as project data is concerned, the existing site is 2.83 acres. The total building addition is 42,000 square feet. The site with the building addition would be 103,000 square feet. The setback... As far as the setbacks are concerned, in the downtown planning code area, there is no minimum or maximum setback, except for the rear, which is the north side. The minimum is five feet. And the site... The project site, as far as the development standards are concerned, complies or was in... Is within the development standards allowed in the downtown planning code area. I have on the screen, I have project renderings with a bird's eye view of the site, the project site, the view from the freeway off-ramp and the patient drop-off area and also arrival along Orange Avenue. As far as parking is concerned, the reason for the variance is for parking. And based on just the code, the West Covina Municipal Code alone, based on the total square footage of the medical office building, the medical office building in the existing in itself would require approximately 117 parking spaces. And the hospital with the addition would require 234 parking spaces. However, the downtown planning code allows... Parking requirement is 65% of what's required by the code. So, in this sense, the parking requirement for the downtown planning code area and for the site is 229 parking spaces, which is a 79 parking space deficit. The existing site with the parking of the 18 parking spaces available on the project site itself and also on the parking lot across on Orange has a total of 150 parking spaces. And there has been a parking analysis that was conducted for the site. And based on the parking count, the peak demand for the existing use is 123 parking spaces. And that was counted on a Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. And all other timeframes that were... Where the parking count was conducted, the parking demand ranged from 13 to... It says 19, but it's 119 parking spaces. However, based on the IT or parking demand and also with existing use into consideration, the parking... The total parking demand is 154 parking spaces, which is four spaces less than what is provided. However, based on the unique characteristics of the proposed use and using this in combination with the fact that the existing medical office is... The existing uses are going to be... The tenants are going to be vacating the site because of the anticipated expansion of an adult daycare program, which has less of a parking demand because the adult... The participants of the adult daycare program are typically bused or shuttled to the site, similar to the other adult daycare programs that the Planning Commission has reviewed in the past. This is to say that there is a condition of approval in the draft resolution indicating that the adult daycare program will require a separate conditional use permit in order for it to be allowed on the site. And that would be addressed by the Planning Commission at a later time when they do submit the application. There also have been additional conditions of approval that addresses some of the parking concerns. And these conditions... One of the conditions of approval requires that if there are any parking, I guess, issues on the site, that the planning... That staff can bring the item back to the Planning Commission for modification of the entitlement for added conditions or remove... Modify... Or modification of what they were approved for. In addition, there is also another condition of approval requiring that the parking lot that's being utilized by the West Covina Medical Center, that it continues to provide parking for the center and that the documentation of this be recorded before the permit final. There is also additional requirements for the entitlement. One is arts in public places. Based on the project, arts in public places would be... Public art would be required. And they have the option to install their own art or pay the in lieu cost, which is equal to 1% of the construction valuation. Development and impact fees, the total fee required based on the current standards is And upon discussion with staff, the applicant has stated their willingness to provide the city 10 beds, 10 beds a day for unhoused individuals needing mental health care. And the 10 individuals needing mental health care does not necessarily... Is not necessarily going to be provided care onsite. They may... If there is room onsite, they will be provided care onsite. They may be dropped off at their other locations locally that the ownership of the West Covina Medical Center also own in other cities. As far as environmental review is concerned, the... This mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact document was prepared and it was circulated for public review and comment from January 15 to February 3. And the city did receive comments from the Los Angeles County Sanitation District and Department of Toxic Substance Control, the State Department. Comments were prepared for letters received during the public comment period and a copy of those letters were attached to the Planning Commission's report. As far as the CEQA document is concerned, the CEQA document was prepared by the city's consultant, Teri Hayes and Associates. And I have Teresa Lee available if the Planning Commission has any questions in regards to the environmental document. And she is able to go into much... Into detail regarding the CEQA document in itself. With that, staff recommends approval of the project with the certification of the mitigated NCC, approval of the precise plan, the resolution... The conditional use permit and also the variance. Also, one thing to point out is I drove by the site this morning and noticed that the landscaping along the front of the parking lot across the street on Orange is currently lacking. So, I'd like to add a condition of approve... I'd like the Planning Commission to consider adding a condition of approval, requiring that rehabilitation of the landscaping on the parking lot across the street that's being utilized on Orange Avenue. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Okay. Do we... Planning Commission, do we have any questions for staff right now before we open up?
I have no question, but I would like to take that recommendation to add the landscaping condition.
Okay.
I do have a question with regard to the, I guess, community benefit that is to be provided as part of this. 10 patients per day dropped off by whom?
The police... Typically, the police department.
Okay. So, it's... So, if a third party who happens to be in West Covina or is a resident of West Covina, are they going to be turned away because they're unhoused? Or is that... I'm not clear on that.
So, it would be a community... It would be some... It would be somebody that a city official or the police department drops off on their site. And it can be on their existing site or in their nearby site on, I believe, Glendora.
Okay.
It's typically the way this hospital is operated, they typically don't accept patients admitted on the site. They're usually transferred there from other facilities.
So, currently, they're operating a behavioral health facility, correct?
I don't believe that's the case right now. That's what they're proposing.
Okay. How many beds do they currently have?
I believe they currently have 40... Forty-six?
Okay. And so, the proposal is to go from 46 to 7... And add an additional 71, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the parking... Okay, let me ask. Okay, so how many new employees are going to be onsite with the new facility versus current status quo?
The applicant would be able to better answer that question regarding their employees.
Okay. And as far as the behavioral health aspect of this, this is going to be an inpatient facility?
Yes.
Okay. And are we talking about involuntary psychiatric treatment?
The applicant would be better to answer that question.
All right. Okay.
I have a question regarding parking though, Joanne. Existing and new parking that's being provided for the new building, do you have that number? And where are the parking? Where are the parkings right now?
Right now, the parking space is this area in between the existing building and also the I-10 off-ramp. And it is where the proposed building in drive aisle is proposed to be located.
I'm sorry, we didn't see the arrow earlier. So, can you point to where the existing?
In this area.
That's the existing?
Yes.
And what about the new parking?
I'll show... You have the aerial here. The existing parking is in this area. And also, there's existing parking in the back, which will remain. And there's also existing parking along the east, which only two will remain in place because of the fire department requirement of the turnaround.
Okay. So, how many existing parking and how many will be new parking after the buildings are built?
It's currently 55. The requirement, adding the square footage, would be 150, correct?
Correct.
So, where's that 150 is gonna...
Well, that's why the variance is being requested because we're short 79.
Right. But where are the new parkings going to be?
Street.
Even though there's no street parking.
No, they do have a parking lot across the street in this area right here. And that's owned by the...
Can you show the picture and on the diagram?
It's across the street on Orange. It's on a different site. This area where the trees are.
That's also owned by them as well?
Yes.
Or the other side?
Yes. I'm sorry?
Okay. How many parkings over there? It's existing, right? Right now? The total 55, majority of the parkings over there?
They, they have park, there's parking, there's 55 here and there, they also have parkings in this area. Let me go ahead and check, hold on.
I guess we can ask the applicant after we hear from them.
Seventy, seventy-two. It looks like.
Okay, all righty. Okay, does anyone else have questions for staff? If not, we'll just, is it for the patient, is it long-term or short-term care?
The applicant would be best to answer that question.
Okay, I'll just open the public hearing. We're going to be hearing testimony from applicant and then those in favor, then those opposed. I have one card, but it didn't state. I guess we'll hear it from the applicant first. Is, is this Brad Manning? Nick, okay.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're very excited about this project and what this will do for the community. My name's Nicholas Herman with the BR Companies. We are the developer on the project and-
My name is Vicky Rollins. I'm the chief operating officer for the hospital.
Vicky Rollins is joined by Bill Nelson. They've run several hospitals and behavioral health facilities throughout Los Angeles, the greater Los Angeles area. They do a lot of, they do a lot of work throughout the community and with their LADMC Foundation. This hospital actually is part of a license tied to downtown LA site. So as we talk about the operating plan for this hospital, patients are first evaluated in downtown LA and then would be brought here for acute, inpatient psychiatric care.
So the length of stay would be like eight to 10 days?
Do you want to talk a little bit about how, you know, the, the continuum of care with the patients? So then as for the parking questions, we are losing some parking spaces on the site. It is a tight site. There are benefits to putting the building on the site because you're able to share services with the existing hospital that it's connected to. The MOB that's there up until this point has had a daycare, you know, for, for elderly and behavioral health patients that are in the community. And then it has also had private tenants that practice, you know, in the medical office building. Those leases have been terminated and, and basically the, the amount of visitors, there won't be, you know, the public coming to the space now. And in the future, as Joanne mentioned, a conditional use permit will be applied for to expand the current daycare program. That daycare is not the purpose of this application, but it's just to say that the parking demand will be less on the site. We worked through Taha and then also hired LLG to help us do this analysis. The parking lot across the street that was shown, which in this picture is in the lower left-hand corner, when, when you see the photo of it, from the aerial photo, it's covered in, in trees there. That's, that's the existing parking lot owned by the, by the owner. Also, parking is, has been borrowed from Floor and Decor in the past, which the owner, like, we, we wanted to apply for this variance to be able to just use the property that the owner owns, but also a, like a, a long-term agreement has been set up with Floor and Decor to have additional parking that's closer if needed. But the, this variance is requested to just be able to use the, the tree parking lot across the way and the remaining parking that's on the site. Given the nature of the, of the patients, they don't really have visitors. Maybe there's one visitor a day, they're there for a short period of time, and then they're, when they, when they're left, or when they get to exit this hospital, they're not just let out onto the street. There's a, there's a, the foundation works with a whole process to move them through a continuum of care and find housing for them. If I could also go and address the question about how patients are dropped off there. The owner has wanted to make this project a benefit to the community, like you said. And in initial meetings with the planning department, you know, we understood that there really wasn't a plan or a program for transients or people with behavioral health needs in the community. So really the, the terms or the definitions of that are, are just that if your officials, you know, need help and bring, bring patients over, Ms. Vicky and Bill Nelson, you know, have agreed to take those patients in, bring them to LA Downtown Medical Center in downtown LA, evaluate them, and then if there's space in this hospital, they can bring them back here for care or they can bring them somewhere else.
But the initial point of drop-off would be there, here?
That's correct, yeah. So, and there's a, there's an ambulance bay in the back, which can just be, you know, would just be used as a drop-off. It doesn't need to be an emergency. So, you know, we'll receive them there and then on our own accord, bring them to downtown to evaluate them.
And how many years is the long-term agreement for parking with Floor and Decor?
So it was not a condition of approval, but Ms. Vicky went and did that anyway. Did you have a?
It's, there is no set, but it's renewable every two years.
So that was, yeah, I guess there's not a term on it.
Two-year term.
I said there's not a term on it, it's a-
It's no term.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I- How, how many options are there?
There is, they didn't stipulate any options.
Okay. But do you, do you actually have, do you actually have contractual options, unlimited contractual options or in perpetuity or?
It's actually between Perfect Auto Park.
Perfect Auto Park.
Yeah.
Oh, the auto-
That we were able, we were dealing, we were, we were negotiating with the two companies, Floor and Decor that you mentioned, and then Perfect Auto Service Parts. And, yeah, Perfect Auto Service Parts gave us an agreement for up to 72 parking spaces.
Okay, and, and the term of it?
It's for two years renewable, but there is no set how many two years we have to renew.
Okay, so that, that's that answer. And I think, I guess, the, the purpose, a lot of time was spent on the parking study and, you know, going over the operating plan, you know, how many visitors are coming, what the current usage is. So we don't actually need those spaces, you know, to meet, like, the demand as it was studied was only 119, right? As she mentioned, in the peak, it was 123. So with this move, the, and the MOB being cleared of doctors, dentists and patients and whatnot, you know, that demand is going down and these patients that are in this 71 bed are, you know, are, are bussed in and bussed out. So the, the whole intent of that parking variance was to study, confirm and show that our parking reduction is actually going down because the space, you know, use is changing and that the existing parking was sufficient. Again, they only monitored and saw 123 parking, you know, spaces used in their peak time. So the, you know, this, this auto store and the Floor and Decor agreement was something that was added just in the past couple of days as a safety net, but our, our variance request is for the property that they own.
So you have 46 beds currently, 71 that you're, that you're proposing to add. Of the 46 that are currently in place, are, are any of those going for behavioral health patients?
No, so it is, this is a, a general acute care hospital that is largely used as skilled nursing right now. So there are 13 med surg beds not being operated as med surg. You know, looking down the road, there are a lot of seismic compliance things to look at. So right now, there are only 14 skilled nursing beds being used in the existing hospital.
We have about, we average about 17 to 20 in the subacute skilled nursing part of the hospital.
And they're long-term.
Because after COVID, yeah, that's long-term, yeah. After COVID, whenever really reopened, the medical surgical unit and the operating room.
So it's not functioning as a traditional hospital where somebody breaks an arm and goes in there, you know, to see a doctor? It's just being used as skilled nursing at the moment.
But what happens when that changes and you start utilizing that facility back to its, you know, best and highest use? Are, are we going to have a big parking deficit under the current study?
The, the plans are for skilled nursing in the future, which we'll address in the coming four years. Basically, it will, it will, it won't be able to be a surgery center in the future based on HICA's code and seismic requirements. So the, the business model of this campus is changing into, you know, into just treating patients that need to be dropped off and, and taken care of.
So what are you going to do when you're, okay, so I, I need to ask a baseline question because you're saying that the patients are going to stay between eight and 10 days. Are we talking involuntary, inpatient?
Mostly involuntary because the current license of our other sites, we are LPS designated facility.
Okay, so-
Only one of the few that is LPS designated. So it will be mostly involuntary.
Okay, so, so you guys aren't going to be doing any 53-50 stuff? You guys are going to be doing 51 and 52s? Okay, so 52s by definition go 14 days. So, so are, when you say it's eight to 10 days, is that, are we just talking about an average or are we talking about?
An average.
Okay, all right. The, the thing is, in, as, as somebody who is very aware of the mental health situation in this county, one of the things that I, I'm concerned about is that you're going to, you're going to have situations where most of the people who fall under 52-50 have visitors typically in the evening. That's typically what mental health facilities allow for, is evening visitation, usually for an hour. And most of the time, when I've gone to those facilities during that time, there's no parking. And it's a big problem. And it's not just a problem in Los Angeles County, it's a problem in Orange County as well. So my concern about it is that whatever you guys do, if this is approved, you're going to need to have offsetting visitation hours to make sure that this actually works. Because otherwise, I very much fear it won't work. Because people are going to have to come out to see you. If, if you guys are actually doing the, the evaluation in Los Angeles, bussing people out to West Covina and then, you know, their loved ones or whatever are coming out to see them, you know, that's, that's what happens for the most part. And, you know, typically, when you're talking about LPS, it's not, you know, it's not the average homeless person on the street that's getting placed in LPS. It's usually somebody who's got a really diligent loved one, who actually cares about them, who really forces the system to take them. That's typically how it works. And so my, my, again, that's my biggest concern on this parking issue. I don't, I don't want to create a mountain out of a molehill, but I've seen it with my own eyes. So again, I, I, I do like the fact that you guys have a, have a, have a secondary parking place.
Oh, a planned be-
My, my, my question, my question on that is, okay, is that a recorded leasehold estate or is that just a contractual situation? Okay, all right.
But we do have a facility in the city of Rosemead, which is like 15 minutes away from here. It's 118 bed facility inpatient as well. And, yeah, we do 52-50s over there, so.
But you guys aren't doing 53s?
No.
Okay, all right. So they'd be transferred out to LA?
Yeah, historically, you know, the 51-50s, the 52-50s, and then the 53-50s were like problematic to a lot of, you know, inpatient psychiatric facilities. We have a county contract and they really like how we evaluate, manage and treat their clients. And, you know, from a 10-bed contract in our other facilities, they increased it to 36, so, you know, because our core of psychiatrists and the interdisciplinary team that we've, you know, we've built in our company are really like passionate about mental health and psychiatric issues. And we have proven to the governments, whether federal, state, county, local, and that, you know, we are, the eight, 10 days is kind of a, an average length of stay, then you can go into your geometric length of stay, right? And, but we've proven that when we start, you know, the, the right treatment for that individual patient, that it does work. And you can, and you can treat that patient within that continuum timeframe. And the other reason why we're, I guess, successful in that regard is our company also owns and operates skilled nursing facilities. So after we devise the new treatment protocol for the patient and the medication regimen for the patient, we don't return them to the lower level of care. We recommend like a 30-day stay in a skilled nursing facility where they really truly, you know, experience the benefit of the new treatment and medication modality. And when Nick was saying that we also go beyond from the skilled nursing facility before even turning them back to their lower level of care, we try and participate, actively participate in the job, on the job training program for this, for these patients before they can be integrated back, back into the community.
You said that most all of them are involuntary? What percentage is that?
The involuntary? We do about 80% or 85% of our total.
And for the others who wish to be discharged and they're eligible to just walk out?
They do, they're self-directs.
So would they be released into our streets of West Covina?
Um, well, like, we have a few self-directs from the county and we usually get them engaged. And I'm figuring the population here in West Covina are probably already in the system with the county. So we would, you know, actively engage the county for collaborative efforts.
If they were transferred here from another location, I, I believe they should be transferred back to where they came.
Correct.
You're not going to transfer them here and then when they want to discharge, just let them walk out into?
No, well, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is aimed at being a problem-solving, not a problem-creating project, right?
So as, as far as voluntary stays, is, is that going to be, are, are the voluntary stays going to be coming from other facilities or are they going to be initiated here?
It depends. I mean, in our historical performance, you know, they're really, the majority is really involuntary.
Right.
So the voluntaries are pretty minimally numbers, so they're manageable.
I, I think I would, I would add to this also that the, the other sites-
Can you get closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
I just want to yell in her face. You know, the other sites that are run by, by Ms. Vicky, you know, they're not overflowing, right? So there, we're not in a point right now where patients from LA Downtown Medical Center are needing to be transferred here or from Ingleside are being transferred here. This project actually is a state-funded project from the Behavioral Health Continuum Investment Program. So we applied for a grant, one state fund through the Department of Healthcare Services to build this project. So the, the location on the site was more because there's a need out here and there is, there was space and the, the hospital could support it. So that's, that's been the, you know, the generate, the origination of this, of this project. We, we look at this as a solution for the community and, and, you know, the, the welcoming 10 patients a day or, you know, from, from the community, from your officials is a, is a, is a great offering to show that we're here to help, you know, and not just, we're, the, the idea of this is not to transport patients from LA to this point and then let them out onto the street here. It's to serve those page, patients, help them get better. And then we're also opening those doors to the city of West Covina because you have patients here that need help. And you're able now bring them to this facility and have them, you know, get treated by a reputable program. So I, I think-
I, I don't mean to interrupt, but one, one of the things that, that was said previously is that you guys aren't doing any evaluations on-site here in West Covina. Okay, so we, let's say we have 10 patients a day dropped off. Are you guys holding them in custody at that point in time throughout, from that point in time all the way to the, you know, to the transfer point to be evaluated in Los Angeles? Or how is that working? Because, or, or is the drop-off really not, not really happening here? We're having our, our police officers drive their cars to downtown Los Angeles to do it? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's not what we-
Typically, though, you know, the patients are being taken by PD and other home teams that are, that are aligned with the county, with the county's, you know, mental, behavioral, you know, facilities. And they usually, their team will usually take them to emergency rooms and get clearances. So from the emergency room like Queen, they can go directly to West Covina, there's no problem. If they come from entry community, ER, and they're medically cleared, there will be no problem. They can go directly to, so we won't be holding them-
Whoa, whoa, wait.
The West Covina Center per se.
I just want to make sure I understand the process on all of this. Okay, so, so you guys are, so in the event that you do have a, a, a patient who, who needs to be temporarily institutionalized for whatever reason, we can quibble over that word, but whatever. My, my question is, they're not coming to your facility, they're going to be going through one of the local hospitals first and then transferred to Los Angeles and then ultimately transferred to you? transferred to you?
As part of our application, we've submitted a business operations plan. That business operations plan states that if a patient is brought to the West Covina facility, that we will transport them to downtown LA to medically clear them, to evaluate them, to get them stable, right? And then once stable, we'll bring them back. So if you brought one at 8:00 AM, we would have to have one of our vans or ambulances take them to downtown LA. If you brought one at 9:00 AM, we would need to either take a second van, or that same van would need to return. So the idea of holding them is if, you know, if... Can you talk to that point? If they're coming scattered throughout the day?
I'm a little lost with the holding, because, you know, it has never happened in our operations. Right now, if PD will pick up, let's say, in downtown LA, they usually bring them to... Our LA downtown location has a clinic that medically clears them, and then gets to be admitted into our... Because PD can also do 5150s, right? And the home teams from the LA County, they can also do 5150s. And they have psychiatrists, you know, that are mobilized all throughout the city of LA, and they can put them on 5150. So by the time we get the patient admitted, they're medically cleared, and they're already, you know, ready for inpatient.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, that's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure that... Because it sounded like that wasn't, there wasn't going to be a determination that had been made. You guys are going to take them to LA. I was trying to figure out, how do you guys have the custodial right to do that? And then, yeah, anyway, okay.
So I think, yeah, this will, I think additional discussion with the city will need to be happening. That way I can better explain to their PD and to the other, you know, city officials, the dynamics would be...
Okay, understood.
Before we sit, just on this parking variance, you know, we brought up this additional agreement, but for the purposes of today's, you know, request, it's if you would consider and accept the parking variance based on the study that we've done, the cars that we've counted, the change in use of the MOB, that's going to reduce the amount of traffic there. And then the other component that was in that variance was that, you know, this would be monitored, and if it became a problem, that we could reevaluate that together. So I think the reason for that proposal is that everybody is confident that based on the number of visits and how this business plan will operate, that we will be able to sufficiently park ourselves.
So, real quick, because I do need an answer on this, and I had asked staff, but they didn't have this information. How many new employees will be onsite at any given time? What's the maximum number of employees who will be onsite?
We're looking at about 50.
50? Okay. And how many are currently onsite?
How many currently onsite?
What's the max at any point in time, currently?
We're only doing skilled nursing facility with an average census of 18, so, yeah, 30, 31 a day.
So there's only going to be 19 additional employees onsite with the inpatient facility?
All the way.
Or with the behavioral health facility? Only 18 more?
We have, okay, so rather than guessing the numbers, we have this outlined in the business plan that we submitted. So let me go to my seat and try to pull that up.
Number five.
Actually, I have a question, though, regarding acute for this behavioral-mental facility. Is that a lockdown?
It will be a locked facility.
So once you get in there, the patients cannot get out by themselves?
No.
Okay, that's one. The other one was when you mentioned involuntary. Involuntary meaning all, or at least 80% of them? It will be coming in through the police department? How do you explain involuntary? How do they get to become involuntary?
So all the, we typically, we have an intake admitting department that gets the inquiry or gets the calls. And then we have our own psychiatric evaluation technicians or clinicians. And most of the 95% are done via video, and to evaluate whether that patient meets the criteria for 5150. We don't take them unless they qualify for the criteria.
I guess my question is, is the patients coming through their families, or they're coming through the police departments, or...
Right now...
For the involuntary one?
For the involuntary ones, we get them from a lot of emergency rooms, our county contracts, our skilled nursing facilities who call us, that they have patients who are decompensating from their schizophrenia, bipolar, that type of diagnosis. But we don't really admit them unless they qualify for, they meet the criteria for 5150, for involuntary.
And then they only stay there about eight to 14 days, and then after that, they get transferred somewhere else?
It depends on the type of patient. If this is your hard, very challenging patient, we usually recommend for the patient to go into a skilled nursing facility to continue the new treatment modality.
But skilled nursing is only lasts about 30 days or so after that? Is there...
It depends. If the patient does well in the skilled nursing facility, and is able to go back to their lower level of care, like adult residential facility, continuing, you know, residential facility or transitional facility, then we would do that type of discharges.
So eventually, they have to go to some type of facility, not eventually going out back to the...
It depends. There are patients that who can go back directly to their apartment, or they can, families will take them back home.
The goal with these patients is to treat them and help them get better and get back to normal lives. Some patients cannot return back to normal lives and need continuous care and treatment, and they end up in the system for a long time. But there are patients that are on the fence, and sometimes have episodes, which, you know, might find them walking around, the police officer doesn't know what to do with them, brings them to the hospital and drops them off and says something's wrong, right? And at that case, the hospital reaches out to Ms. Vicki, and Ms. Vicki helps treat them, get them back to a stable point, to be able to give them back to their families or get back on their feet, right?
It really depends on the patient, how they respond to the new treatment modality and the new medications that we establish in the, you know, at the hospital. Because you don't want to create these new modalities, and then the patient goes back to a lower level of care. No one is supervising this patient to make sure that the patient is medication compliant, or, you know, or is really fully rehabilitated to go back to the community.
So for the 20% volunteer and the 80% involater, the entire campus is locked down?
It's locked down, yeah. It is locked down.
Whether it's volunteer or involter, they can't open the door and go into the community?
They won't be, because it's... In an inpatient psychiatric facility, it is state and federal regulation, and we're heavily regulated to make sure that the security of the clients and the safety of the clients and the staff are paramount.
Okay, thank you.
I know we've spent a lot of time on the subject of parking, but now that I have this business plan, and Mr. Lewis, you have this with the West Covina heading on top?
Yeah, so this was the thing I was trying to figure out. Okay, so she's saying, so she's saying there will be, on average, 50 onsite?
Yeah, so we, sorry that we weren't prepared for that. We wrote this down ahead of time so that we could plan this out, right? And when we were planning the building and its occupation. So the Behavioral Health Edition itself, the new 71 beds, will have 50 total staff.
Right.
That's not at once, though.
Right.
Across shifts. So 16 is the average number of staff, that's four per floor, right? During peak shift, with shifts starting 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and another 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So when we're counting cars, we've got 16, you know, workers that are there with cars, and the reality is not all of them use cars, right? Some of them carpool, some of them bus, some walk. Based on Ms. Vicki's experience with her current behavioral health floors that she has at downtown LA, there's not a lot of visitors. So we have less than five visitors per day in these general hours based on these beds. She's got many skilled nursing facilities, other behavioral health facilities, there are not visitors, one per patient every night. So we've, you know, we've listed out what we think is reasonable, based on her experiences, five visitors a day, and as you mentioned, that's in off-peak hours. And we have 10 drop-offs per day, so, you know, that drop-off can use that back entrance or would use that back entrance, so it's not a vehicle that's parking there. And then we mentioned that length of stay. If you go to the second page, it calls out the existing subacute hospital, which has currently 16, and this is where Ms. Bobby is often at, 16 total number of staff during peak, 10 drive, we counted them, and others use public transportation. One to two visitors a day for those long-term patients that are there. And then that medical office building is where, like, you know, we're planning a change of use. Right now, we just vacated the tenants. So there were approximately 24 staff there during peak, because there were, you know, eight different suites rented out with four to six visitors per hour. But when you add this all up, you know, 16 staff, one visitor, 16 staff, 10 drop-offs, I mean, we, you know, we don't get to very high numbers of parking, is what we determine for this type of patient care.
Right, but currently, you have the right to change back to the prior existing use as a matter of right without any say from us, correct?
You mean on the MOB?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that we could add those numbers in and still accompany with the 123 parking spaces. Take a, you know, take a drive by it, you'll see that parking lot is largely empty.
I've been there two times for doctor's appointment, and I could never find a spot, and it seemed like the parking lot was actually very, I mean, it was just very messy, the way it was, it wasn't organized.
One onsite, like right on the building site, right?
Right, and I, both times I had to park across the street.
Right, and you probably weren't even aware that there was a parking across, under where all those trees are?
No, I thought that belonged to the other building that's right next to it.
So as part of this, as we work with the city, that, you know, that crosswalk needs to be enhanced, you know, and that parking lot across the street needs to be cleaned up, and, you know, basically become more apparent that that's the parking.
I guess throughout this evening, it's a little bit confusing. It seems like there are three parking spaces. One of them is the main hospital or mental area that you're building. Then there's across the street to the right that was owned by the owner. Then the other, to the lower, across the street to the left, the right and the left. Anyway, those two parking is questionable. So I guess the question is, how many total parking without those two parking that are currently for the new building, and also for the entire compass, which is for the senior? Are we just talking about parking for...
Yeah, let me, so I'm going to ask two things. One, I'm going to just clarify in the map, and then I'm going to ask Joanne to go back to the number slide. Really, for the purposes of this meeting, we should forget about, sorry. Let me go back to that picture. In the top-left picture, on the lower right-hand side, that, right, can we put a mouse over it?
Joanne, can you put that picture just by itself? I think you have it earlier.
Just the aerial by itself? I don't...
Just the building itself?
Okay, got it. Okay, so this is our site here, and there are parking spaces here. When the new building is put in, we do lose these parking spaces, right? This parking lot currently heavily underutilized. This is owned by the owner. It's this entire square, large, right? At a convenience, and like for your last visit, you might have parked across the street here.
Floor and decor.
Some people have done that. For the purposes of this meeting, you know, I ask you to ignore this lot. It's not ours. We have this lot with the parking, and we have this lot across the street. And the whole functional program and operating program is based around using both of these. And that's what our variance request is about, and our parking calculations are only off of this. In reality, we wanted this building to stand on its own, you know, this, both of these properties, because they're owned by the owner. Sorry we introduced it, but anticipating this, or because some people have parked there before, Ms. Vicki has made extra efforts to sign an agreement with the auto parts store over there to be able to use some spaces. And now she's spending extra money just to have that in her back pocket. But the reality is that our operating plan and our parking study shows that we can serve this building through these two lots.
So with the parking area that the owner owns, how many spaces that?
Can you please go back to the... I don't want to give a wrong answer here.
To this one?
Can you go to the slide with the number?
One across the street.
72. Not at the auto place. Okay. So there are 72 in the lot across the street.
Thank you.
It's our architect, Catherine.
On the property, because we're taking up so much parking, it's going to be reduced. So I think there's 20-something on the property. Across the street, then, we're providing 130 spaces, because there's, we're providing 150 total.
Chair FMA, across the street, there's 132 parking spaces.
Thank you.
And onsite, there's going to be 18 parking spaces.
Thank you. We didn't come without rehearsed, I apologize. This is a, we worked on that many months ago. So we have 150 parking spaces. To date, we've never counted more than 123 cars.
That's currently today, without the new facility being built?
Correct. You know, without the MOB operating at all.
Well, that's with the MOB operating.
That's with the MOB operating.
Yes, sir. The MOB leases, yeah, that's what we're saying, it's, you know, it's, there's not a lot of traffic there.
So what I'm hearing is you have a high degree of confidence that it will work out?
Thank you, sir, yes. We have a high degree of confidence that this will work out, and therefore applied for that variance, and, you know, we've worked tirelessly with Taha and with LLG to do the study and multiple site visits. Thank you.
So the conditional use permit also basically tied the owner's property with the parking that's 132 to this particular facility?
Yes.
And it does say in the report that if parking becomes an issue, then we could revisit the CUP and the variance. Joanne, or our attorney, this question would be for you guys, at which point could that be brought up or assessed? Is it on an interval, like two years, or is it as needed?
It would be up to the Planning Commission. If you would like to revisit this, if you would like this brought back as a condition of approval in two years, then we would do so. Or typically, in other projects, it was at a complaint, it is at a complaint basis. So when we get a lot of complaints with parking, mainly people calling the city, or observed by other city staff, police department, code enforcement, planning staff, engineering staff, we, then we would talk to the applicant and initiate bringing it back to the Planning Commission.
Got it.
How many other facilities do you have?
Ms. Vicki, how many other facilities do you have?
Acute care, Ms. Visser. So the LA Downtown Campus is at 1711 West Temple, and then the Rosemead Campus, which is only 15 minutes away. We have 118 beds, and hopefully the 71-bed facility that we're requesting the city to approve or build.
I'm sure that all of your staff members are specialized in mental health. Have they had any incidents that would, you know, cause any, you know, danger to the community?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
So they, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, for this type of care that you, they all are, I mean, I just, I guess what I'm asking is what type of training and how well are they trained to handle that type of patient?
Also, because of the regulations, we do have mandated in services for the staff, whether it's monthly or once in every quarter or semi-annual and yearly. And we're accredited by the joint commission for the hospitals, and they come every year, no, every three years. Department of Public Health comes every year for surveys, and CMS also does the annual survey.
And they're all experienced, not students?
No, 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 we can't. They have to be licensed. They do check the license.
Sorry to interrupt. The licensing, are there LVNs, RNs?
RNs, yeah. We even have NP's now at this point.
What was that?
Nurse practitioners.
NP's, got it. So licensed professionals. I think that's what she was looking for, for confidence in the staffing.
Right. Yes, sir.
Thank you all for your questions. I understand how important this is to you to have clarity on a project like this. And it's been part of a big mission, working with BCHIP, the Behavioral Health Conservation Program. And thank you for considering us, and we're looking forward to doing good work for you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Also, for those who were speaking earlier, could you, I didn't get a card, so could you fill out one card for us?
The applicants, do you have a card?
I only have one for Brad Manning. It didn't say.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, I want to thank you. Just for note, I spent 10 years on the Covina Planning Commission, answering and asking all of the questions that you are giving today. And I'm sure glad I'm on this side, not on your side tonight. By the way, do I state where I live, or do you just take that off the card?
But if you want to.
We used to do that over at the other place. 21310 East Covina Boulevard in Covina, California. I am actually not a resident of West Covina. However, I have been named Citizen of the Year, very active in the community in regards to community events. And I'm really in favor of this project. And I look at it from three or four different perspectives. You know, I know as soon as I was going to talk, I was going to get hoarse, so I apologize for that. One, I'm the former principal at West Covina High School. From a professional standpoint, and the number of incidences that we have, not only at West Covina while I was there and while I was at Workman and then following my grandkids in the area. The number of times that we have had to move kids on 72-hour hold and three-day hold. And sometimes they go to Charter Oaks. Sometimes they would get evaluated, as it was described here at Inner Community or at Queen or San Dimas, wherever the situation arose. And if there were local beds, that was nice. Most of the time, they're not. A lot of those beds are in LA. And families are displaced and have to go down there and all that kind of stuff. I'm excited that we at least have a facility where we have a chance to keep the kids local here for the convenience of our families. I think that's important. I also look at it from a partnership standpoint between the city, the school districts, the community site. And we have had some informal talks about that, and I'm really excited about it. So I really encourage you to approve this project. I'll also talk about, just from a personal standpoint, my grandson, when he was in fourth grade, had an episode in which he had to be taken to Inner Community to be evaluated and was transported to LA. And so from a personal standpoint, you know, I've seen the need for it. And I think that, and this was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, I don't know. And it's only gotten worse. The need for mental health services in our community, in our area, to serve our families is much needed. And to have the facility and expertise right here in our own backyard, I think, is really positive. I also look at it from, I also serve on the board of Del Haven Community Center. And although it does a lot of after-school programs and deals with other issues there, they have now started a program, and I'll say the word "we" have started now that I'm on the board. I've started a program called Because We Care. Tim Seal, the owner, and I'm not sure exactly what his title is now because he's kind of stepped aside from director. I guess he's CEO. His father, who started Del Haven Community Center, and this is public, I'm not speaking out of hat, he's spoken about this many times, suffered from mental illness and eventually took his life. Tim's brother, who helped him run the program, also served, had mental illness problems and eventually took his life. And then his son was having problems. And fortunately, he had enough money to be able to get him the proper help. And he's now in great shape. But he had his period of time where he had problems. And he looked around and he looked at his community, which serves West Covina, and says, there's not a lot here. So he, in his own accord, has started a program called Because We Care. It's been three years in existence now, in which they have gone on and contracted with mental health professionals for evaluations, treatments, and things like that. And we are excited. I know that Eric Benavides, our new director, has written a letter of support because of the informal conversations that we've had in which we can tap into some of those resources to help his program as well. So, you know, I look at this from a personal, from a professional, from a community aspect. And I really think this is a positive thing. You have to get by the things like parking and beautifications and needs. And I wish we had more than 10 beds designated for West Covina. But I think the fact that we have it here, that we eventually can build partnerships between the city, the school districts, and the site itself is really positive and well worth doing. And with that, I thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And you know so much about this. I was going to go in, it's all this stuff, and I'm going, I don't know half as much as what you know. So I was very impressed with that. And of course, Dario, he lives it, so, medical building. Any questions from anybody else? I will add one last thing. West Covina Medical, as an institution, is a great community partner with West Covina. With my work with the West Covina Kiwanis Club, with our community service groups, with all the different organizations and businesses and activities that we get involved in, they are in it 100% with us. And I just love them as a community partner. And I think the city could really do well by creating those partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have those who oppose this project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open commission discussions. Okay, commission?
Well, I think we've discussed quite a bit in asking questions. With everything that's been said, I'd like to make a motion. My motion will have three bullet points. The first one would be what I mentioned earlier about the landscaping, that I would like to make a condition of approval if my commission agrees, that the landscaping be cleaned up, as mentioned. The second condition would be that we revisit the parking two years from now. Outside of that, it will just be an as-needed basis, as discussed, you know, based on community complaints. And the third one, that Brad just made me think of, is that if at any point it becomes helpful for West Covina to use more than 10 beds, that that could be accommodated. And that's all from me and fellow commissioners.
I would, I want to second it. I just want to clarify a couple of things.
Yes.
So first and foremost, I think it's up to 10 per day, is what I understand. I think that's right, right? So that's actually better than you think it is. And with regard to the parking issue, the only thing I want to get clarified is, I know they do have that off-site, that off-site parking. So to the extent that we're bringing it back, let's make sure that any satellite parking that they have available is included in any study when it does come back. So we don't have any random distortions or anything like that. Because, you know, unfortunately, if we have a bunch of people who park on the off-site parking that we don't know about, it's going to be very difficult to assess whether or not the 150 is sufficient. So that'd be the only sort of amendment.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And what I'm looking for is just to make sure it works for everyone.
Yeah, and then I'd second it with that amendment.
Cool with that.
Cool, second.
And fellow commissioners, anything else that?
Would you like to add something? Okay. In that case, roll call, please, Joanne.
Vice Chair Basara?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Chair Hang?
Aye.
4-0.
These decisions will be final unless a written request for appeal is presented to the City Council within 10 days. Good luck, and we need it, and we should talk more about mental facility.
Good luck, guys.
Good luck. It's a great work that you're doing.
We're moving on to non-hearing items. Non-hearing items. There's going to be a review of unclassified use permit, number 348. The permit is Roger, addresses 2748 East Garvey Avenue, the Five Star Inn. Joanne, who will present the staff report?
I will be presenting the staff report. Five Star Inn is an existing operating motel within the city of West Covina. It is located adjacent to Crestview Calak to the west, Days into the east, and the Waldo Creek Wash to the south. It is on the south side of Garvey Avenue East, just south of the I-10 freeway. The closest residential property is across the Wash, approximately 24 feet away from the site. The use and the construction of the site was initially approved through an unclassified use permit. The unclassified use permit is basically the same thing as a conditional use permit. The conditional use, a conditional use permit is the more modern name for the unclassified use permit in today's times. This item was last reviewed by the Planning Commission in August of last year. During the Planning Commission review, the Planning Commission directed staff to bring the item back to the Planning Commission in five months. Just a review of the code enforcement cases since August 2024, since the last Planning Commission review. And just to give some background, the most recent code enforcement case was opened in May 3 of 2023. This case has not been closed because one of the issues that was part of this case was the construction that was done in the units without permits. The applicant has since obtained those permits or is in the process of getting those permits finalized with the city's building division. However, since then, since last August 2024, there have been several ongoing code enforcement cases involving graffiti, property maintenance issues such as a green swim pool and illicit discharge and dead landscaping, windows without protective screens, abandoned shopping carts and piles of trash on-site, loitering, outdoor storage. And also, code enforcement has observed that the business owner was previously working with a nonprofit that dropped off unhoused individuals on the site. However, according to the business owner, the homeless voucher program that he had with the nonprofit has been terminated. And he is in the process of removing the long-term tenants, which at this point has been mostly removed from the site. Here are some photographs of the code enforcement from when the code enforcement officers have observed the various code enforcement cases that have been included for the record. Property maintenance and landscaping issues. I didn't want to include pictures of people loitering with their faces showing. So this is, this on the left is a photograph that I found where there's, I guess, a part of people pictured without their faces showing and basically trash and a lot of storage left on like the walkways and on landscaping, graffiti, the green pole, the outdoor, the unpermitted or illegal bin, and photographs of the windows without the screens and also photographs, a photograph of the van that was dropping off unhoused individuals. However, since the code enforcement officer's last visit to the site, most recent visit, which was on February 3 of this year, it has been observed that the issues of previously pending code enforcement cases have been resolved and have been addressed. And these are pictures taken of the site with the site clean. As far as police calls for service is concerned, since from January 1 to December 31 of 2023, there were 95 calls for service. And from January 1, 2024, to January 27, 2025, there have been 90. And since the last Planning Commission meeting, there have been a total of 44 calls for service for the site. A representative from the Police Department, Captain Plunkett, is here available to answer questions asked by the Planning Commission if the Planning Commission has questions regarding the Police Department's calls for service. And also, we have representatives from the city's code enforcement department here as well to answer any code enforcement-related questions. And as far as Planning Commission options are concerned, it is recommended that the Planning Commission discuss the unclassified use permit. And also, after discussion, the Planning Commission can direct staff to start the UUP modification. Planning Commission can direct staff to start the UUP modification or verification process with a proper public hearing notification, or the Planning Commission can also direct staff to bring the item back to the Planning Commission for discussion at a later time or just simply to receive and file. With that, if the Planning Commission has any questions for me, I'm also available to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you, Joanne. Does anyone want to hear from the captain?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is he here?
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
Captain Ken Plunkett from the West Covina Police Department. How can I help you?
Would you like to go first, or would you like me to go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The questions I have is, in general, types of, what are the types of calls for service, and what do you think would be helpful?
What do I think would be what?
Helpful with resolving any kind of difficulties we may be having.
I'll answer that part first. It sounds, in talking to Mylan with code enforcement and stuff, the property has cleaned up some of their issues. It looks like that some of their lease agreements have been revoked, and the business has kind of returned back to what it was before. The typical calls, the keep the peace, the disturbances, the things that you'll have at places. I was asked to pull some numbers and do a comparison compared to the other hotel in the area. The call volume is pretty similar. We average just under two calls a week that we are going to throughout the year, and it's been consistent for the last couple of years. So I think the call volume has stayed about the same. I look at arrest numbers and stuff, there's nothing really that stands out that's super significant from one location to another. So, you know, I would think that, just looking at the data that I have for the last couple of years, the calls have been relatively the same, especially at both locations. So it seems to just be that area that attracts the call volume, and it sounds like they're moving in a positive direction as far as cleaning up and what we have over there. So I think it's moving in a positive direction as far as I'm concerned with what I'm seeing and what I'm talking to Mylan about.
Feedback, so it's gotten better?
Yeah, it seems like it has gotten better, definitely.
And then that's what I wanted to know. Livier, anything else?
No, I didn't have questions for code enforcement.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Captain.
All right. I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And then we have code enforcement next.
Matthew Reza, code enforcement manager.
Hi. So as far as we could see, and just looking at the, you know, just even simple things, like a pool that's green that they clean up and then it's green again. So have you seen that there's been any improvement with the upkeep of the property?
Significant improvement, especially over the past couple of months. We have noticed that the property owner has been picking up consistently on a daily basis and maintaining the pool along with just other property maintenance issues.
Okay. How often, I mean, obviously, code enforcement, not babysitters, but how often do you have to go, or do you patrol the properties, any of those hotels there?
Yeah, so typically, we go about, just because this is an ongoing code enforcement case, we usually go weekly, at least maybe once or twice a week. I was actually out there today, and the property looked substantially better, in my opinion. So, yeah, over the past, there was nine inspections since September 19, but that's just inspections that we, you know, we log in as a full property inspection, but we drive through all the time and check on it weekly.
So do you think that's just inadequate staff, that why they can't keep, you know, I mean, obviously, there is trash there. We see the pictures, we see that there's, you know, the landscaping, it's dirty, there's graffiti, you know, ample time for them to be able to clean this up, you know, should be within 24 hours. I mean, or sooner, you know, it shouldn't be left there. I have to wonder if the owner actually takes this seriously, because, I mean, if I had been before the Planning Commission prior, I would be making sure that none of this has been happening.
Sure. Yeah, I know. I can't speak to the owner and how it was done before. I know that since we've had open dialogue over the past couple of months, he has been responsive, but again, I'm not sure what was going on prior or what the, you know, what the issues are. We do give corrective actions on our notices, we do recommend that, you know, daily cleanups, and just making sure that his staff does clean rooms daily and monitor the property daily. He does have an onsite manager, who I believe is here today as well, that expresses, you know, his concerns as well. And so far, it's been, since these past couple of months, I've seen improvement, so.
Compared to other hotels, I mean, do you, I mean, graffiti, what have you, do you see them on other hotels' walls and what have you?
Absolutely. It's, graffiti is an ongoing problem throughout, you know, all cities, LA County, but we do address them as well. This case in particular just kind of rises to the occasion of numerous, you know, constant calls with service from the Police Department and ongoing unhoused individuals causing, you know, causing a mess and things like that. So this case was a little different, but graffiti, we do address citywide with a few motels that we have.
Okay. Is it a common problems for West Covina with graffiti?
It's something that we deal with. I mean, you know, it's not a, you see it quite a bit, but, you know, we deal with it, and we try to work with each property owner, getting their contact directly, and, you know, just establishing that dialogue to clean up the property as needed.
Okay. On January 16, 2025, business owners' contract with nonprofit that dropped off unhoused individuals to the site for temporary housing appears to have ceased. Who's verified that?
I have not personally verified that. The owner has been in contacts with us, and based off of the activity at the property, it has substantially died down as far as seeing people congregate, loiter, and things of that nature. We do have some email communication confirming that, but I haven't seen anything from the owner that set in stone that it has been ended, the voucher program.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the owner? I mean, for our code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioners have questions for the owner or the operator?
The owners of the.
Hotel manager as an operator?
Property, yeah.
Hi.
Well, I'll get started if you don't.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm happy to hear that there's been some progress that's made. I do want to ask about the green swimming pool and what it is that happened there, especially because of the concern of not just the unsightliness, but mosquitoes being a huge problem in, not only in our area, but throughout the county. What is it that happened when the pool was green in August and still in September of last year?
Well, I'm not sure whether what happened, but at the same day when he took the pictures, the actually swimming guy, cleaner, he came and cleaned the pool. But I'm not sure why it was still clean, so I called him again as soon as we received it. He came back and cleaned it again. So I'm not sure at that point what exactly happened, but that was only for maybe one or two days, I would say. Maybe he wasn't there for the cleaning, maybe he was short of stuff, I'm not sure. But as soon as we received the notice, it was cleaned right away.
So it was cleaned, and then it happened again?
No.
It was for the, like?
One time.
So from August 30 through September 21, it was green that entire time?
Not the entire time. It was only for one time, I believe, it was there.
I'm asking it in that way because here it says August 30, it was green, and then again, September 21, it was green, only because that's 22 days difference. So I'm just trying to figure out if it was two incidents or if it stayed green.
I'm not sure.
You don't recall?
I'm not sure. I don't.
Okay, well, the details of, you know, your recollection, that's okay. The main point that I'd like to make, though, is that is a pretty serious concern, and I would just like to say, you know, please be sure you hire the right people for that. Mosquitoes are a big concern, you know, more so than the unsightliness, at least in my opinion.
As of right now, the service cleaner guy, the pool cleaner guy, he comes twice a week since that problem has been solved already.
Okay.
From my, let me add this. From my experience, 30 years of experience in managing or owning, operating the hotels, the clientele that we had, the long-term homeless voucher programs, a lot of kids, they don't have proper swimming clothes, so they jump in with the T-shirts, the cotton that eats this chlorine very quickly. So even if the pool guy cleanses today, and if they're in there all day long, next day you will see it turns green, basically that chemical, the cotton clothes soaks it up really quickly. So, but like Anuj said, that we have increased it, but practically, we see that those kind of clients not there anymore anyway, so that significantly improves the quality of the water and the cleanliness.
Okay. You could probably also stock some chlorine tablets for, you know, you were to have an incident like that.
Yeah, and mostly, like you said, September, August, September, it was a summer month, it was very hard to get the kids off of the pool, out of the pool. So they were using, overusing and without the proper swimming.
Got it. And then my next question is about graffiti. Who does your graffiti abatement? Do you guys do it yourselves, or who does it?
Our maintenance guys.
And do you guys have like a standard color of paint that's ready to go, like in the utility closet, or how do you guys manage that?
Just a regular paint. We have a stucco paint.
Yes, but what I'm asking is, do you have like color match-ready buckets of paint for your stucco?
Yes, we do. We have it in stock.
Yeah, it seems that would be the quick and easy way of doing it, is having.
Mostly, we saw that in elevator, where it's very hard to catch who's doing it, and staircases, the railings particularly, and the boundary walls. A lot of time, people jump off of, again, that the wash area that I was mentioning last time as well. Next door, a Cadillac dealer has that bob wire. I would definitely put that on that side, but I was told that I'm not, it's not permitted. I would still like to see if there is a possibility for any way we can block that, because those are not the guests that are staying in the hotel, but they're riding the bicycle, they even lift the bicycle up and bring it into our property, because the only property has clear wall without any obstacles. The next door, Daisy, has those glasses on their boundary wall glued to the wall, so anybody were to touch it will get cut, cannot cross, and so does these. So I'm the only one doesn't have anything that can discourage people from coming into our property. And it's not uncommon. I've seen it, people coming from there, they're loitering, they're doing the graffitis and stuff. So we don't have much of a control over them, but we do what we need to protect our property.
How often do you clean, or have someone who does maintenance to clean the property to go and look for trash and clean?
Trash every day. Practically every day. We have the housekeepers, then the maintenance man does it, and there's the gardener. We hired the gardener who was doing the blowing, the parking lot, once a week and now twice. Now, since we noticed last August, I believe, when we were here last time, since then, we increased that twice a week as well.
Well, because you have.
Photographs that you saw is not the current one, that was from the previous one, I believe.
Now, if there's no longer shopping carts and trash and.
No.
So you also have families who are living there for extended periods of time?
We had.
No longer?
There's only one, the 114.
Yeah, 114.
Well, there's one, but she's been there for like 10 years or maybe more.
She's not from the voucher program, though.
She's been there.
She's still independently.
Okay. So have, since these, since code enforcement reported these, you have already made more, you've addressed it more, so you've added the days for the cleanups?
Yeah, we added the days to clean up.
Almost every day, but it's not every day. I mean, somebody should be going out there every morning to look and see if there's something that's happened. I think there's a lot of activity at night, that's why I'm asking.
In the morning, when the housekeeper comes, they sweep the parking lot. I mean, they pick up the trash, and that's every day.
The housekeepers.
On the housekeepers. On top of it, we have a maintenance guy that he comes once or twice, twice a week. He comes twice a week. He does it as well. He does it a little more in detail, goes around in the back of the building. And then on top of that, the gardener, who's assigned to do the gardening as well as this proper blowing the entire parking lot.
So was he coming twice a week when all these items were happening? Was he coming twice a week?
No, he was not there.
No.
How often was he coming?
He was coming once a week.
Do you think maybe you might need him to come maybe three times a week or so?
Property is clean.
Also, I would like to add something. Also, the housekeeper, when they leave after work, they also clean before they leave.
Who does?
The housekeeper. They also clean in the morning, and they also clean before they leave, before the work. So the parking lot gets cleaned twice a day, in the morning and the evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you guys have security?
No, we don't.
Have you considered getting security?
Honestly speaking, we are barely making payments right now. Business is so down. Since the voucher program is gone, it's totally down less than 50%. It's very hard to make the ends meet right now. We had to let some employees go too for not having enough work.
That's definitely concerning. Don't you think that maybe bringing up the level a little higher might help reverse that trend?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Making improvements like with security, more painting, elevating the level.
Security is not the concern right now because there's no crime, that's the reason. But the main reason is that even though, if you look at the inside, we improvement that we have done since I bought it, I haven't had this for maybe less than a year or so in my possession, not even, yeah, nine months, but significantly, we improved the condition inside. So hopefully, we'll get the better clientele with the outside appearance that has improved with this voucher program is gone. But it takes time to hopefully, but in general, business is so down, not only in this city, but everywhere else too, particularly on the south side of the 10 freeway.
You know, the hotels on the north side are pretty close to sold out. I don't know if you know that. That's due to the fires.
Not really. Maybe it's due to the fires, but Hampton Inn was for sale. I looked at their data. They're not doing any better. They're doing like 65. Particularly on the south side of the 10 freeway, so.
You know, the hotels on the north side are pretty close to sold out. I don't know if you know that, that's due to the fires.
Not really, maybe it's due to fires, but Hampton Inn was for sale, I looked at their data, they're not doing any better, they're doing like 65% occupancy, when their marketing package was out, I saw that. So in general, like I said, at 2024 was down and 25 doesn't look that good either. So hopefully in the future, when businesses picks up and, uh, we should be able to get better business. But right now we're taking a hit, but that's okay. We'll continue to manage it the way it is, uh, the quiet, clean business and no vouchers.
Is that the entire industry in terms of going down for 24, 25 that you're thinking?
Yes, it's entire industry.
Any particular reason, do you think? Do you have any?
I think the overall tourism is down. A dollar is so strong, so we don't have any international travelers that they used to come, China, Nobor. All these basically, I would say, west coast was full of Chinese tourism, um, but since, uh, first time, Trump era, it's not there, they were a very big part of the tourism business. And not so many travelers, like I said. Covid also was part of it.
Yeah, I think that's more like it.
Yeah.
Hasn't picked up since?
Since then, no. Hasn't picked up. And I don't know with this, um, current ice rates, it has taken some effect.
Aren't traveling, people aren't spending money.
Yeah, the local, those that they used to come and spend night or two in the hotels, especially weekends or some, that has significantly reduced too. So it would be very interesting to see how it unfolds in the future.
So the ice raid affected the economy for the local states?
That's my guess because I I see less traffic in so many areas. Particularly hotel owners, when we mingle, we talk about it and then that's people are concerned, you know, those before.
Just happened within the last couple of weeks, I doubt that's been affecting you.
I'm sorry?
That's only been the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about not only a couple of weeks, but overall since before the inauguration, since he was elected, I have heard the stories, some of the people that knew the storm was coming has already left, were in plan of leaving the States, United States, anyway, but that's a different subject.
What about your Anaheim Hotel, has it been affected that much?
Anaheim also has been affected, but, uh, not as hard, but still, yeah. Anaheim is very seasonal. Like if you're a spring break, you have local travelers, they come and stay and but international travel is very less, Anaheim, uh, a lot of, uh, conventions business there too. But so like on the 15th of this month, every property is sold out. But that's just like for a few days out of whole month.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? If not, then we'll have, no? No, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more, do you have a video camera system currently?
Yes, we do.
How many cameras is it?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
So did you pick up any graffiti door?
Once I picked up, but they were from the voucher, we, they are not there anymore.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
We have a commission discussion. Anyone want to start first?
Sure, I'll start, I mean, my my concern is the, I'm glad to hear that it's, uh, looking better now, but my concern is the prior violations of, uh, this, uh, what was it? The old name for conditional use permit, U U U P, unclassified use permit. A lot of the conditions on that U U P were not being met. I think bringing the property and operations up to a higher level would do you, do that owners well. That's why I asked about security and I asked about the cameras. Specifically, one of the conditions, actually, it's that such use will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity, et cetera, there's more that were not being met. You know, we discussed about the pool, you know, I'm glad to hear that's resolved, but I think in general, to not continue to violate any provisions of this permit and to not require us to have to take a look at whether or not we should continue this permit. One recommendation I'll make and I'll see if my commissioners agree with me is I'd like to see security and the addition of a flock camera to the site. And I'll leave the rest to my fellow commissioners to, uh, give us some input.
Anyone else?
Well, I I think that, uh, you know, as as code enforcement said that, uh, it's pretty, you know, it's comparable to other hotels adjacent or in the area or similar. But I I don't think that excuses them from having security. I mean, he does have security, he has free security, it's called a WCPD. And, um, but I think that's something for, you know, we can't require him to have that if, you know, if he has, someone else has similar activity and we're not requiring them to have it. So I I mean, he is making an effort, uh, to, um, improve the property and the conditions there. Um, code enforcement, I think, said he's going there twice a week. Is that what he said, twice a week right now?
Once a week or so.
Something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, I I, you know, we can revisit this again and see if the the improvements continue. I mean, what do you, Bill?
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I I I look at it this way, with regard to requiring security, um, or requiring onsite security, I my, my concern about that is, you know, how how do you ensure that you're not just completely hosing the business to the point where it's just economically unviable at that point in time? That's, that would be my biggest concern. With regard to the flock cameras, I mean, you know, uh, the the big problem with the flock camera stuff is I I just haven't seen any data to support that it's deterring any crime. I mean, you know, there, there is a flock camera literally on that street right in front of McIntyre Square. I mean, it's not far away, there's really no other, um, there's, there's really no other entry points. I think there's, uh, if memory serves me right, I think there's another one, um, down the street as well, but I mean, I I I always, I just question whether or not that 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 would actually be helpful because most of the stuff that I see, um, in that area, um, tends to be, you know, people on foot, you know, doing whatever, it's, it's not usually people in vehicles or anything like that, so you know, one of the other things that I see constantly as being an issue is the wash right behind there. I mean, I know that that, um, that large apartment complex, the the Medici or whatever it is, that's on the corner of of Baranca and, uh, and Virginia has constantly, I mean, they're constantly having to clean the back of the the carports along that, uh, along that wash area, so, I mean, I I just think it's, it's an area that unfortunately, um, you know, so long as that so long as the the Walnut Creek wash is kind of this, um, attractive nuisance that it is, I don't know that we're going to be able to prevent a lot of this stuff. You know, I I do think, um, you know, and hopefully the, hopefully the property owner will, will, uh, will consider may maybe, you know, raising the fence and stuff like that. Um, I think that'd be a good idea and, you know, realistically, if, uh, if that is an issue, um, please come back to us and let us know on that front. You know, what we can do to, um, you know, improve our code on that so that that can happen because I don't want that to be an issue. It's bad enough, you know, the the voucher program, you know, I I I understand, you know, there's a need to make money, but sometimes it's, uh, sometimes it's a, it's a, it's a a a double edged sword and it's a, it it can be a problem for the community and everything. I'm glad you guys have moved on from that and hopefully you guys stay moved on from that, um, you know, and to the extent possible, I I understand. So Joanne, they have, uh, they have, uh, stuff in the permitting process right now? In terms of like interior improvements?
Yes, they're in the process, they're working with building, the building division. Planning went out there and, um, did a, um, planning final.
Okay.
Um, but they're still working on building the, with the building division and in finalizing their permits and eventually closing them out.
Okay, and this is to to upgrade the interior of the, of each of the rooms or?
Yes.
Some of the rooms?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And on on that note, would it be possible to incorporate in that application? They mentioned about adding some sort of security to prevent people from hopping over in the back? Would that have to be a separate application?
It would not be possible, well, if they were going to add it willingly, they can't, they can get permits or to increase their fence, um, height. But if the planning commission wants to to add it in the condition, um, they, the planning commission would have to, um, direct staff to modify the, um, U U P. And the proper public hearing notification process would have to be done for the U U P modification. But, um, the, the, um, applicant or the business owner also has the option of increasing the fence height and adding security on their own as well.
It sounds like there's a willingness there and a request, so I think, um, we don't need to make that a conditional, a a condition of the U U P. So I think we'll, we'll just let the applicant discuss that with you or the the business owner discuss that with you about how to make that happen since they seem interested in it. I think that'd be helpful.
I'd like to add that, um, under the circumstance that perhaps the current operator or hotel owner had inherited some of the issues that he purchased about a year ago. So since a year ago, um, he has made significant improvement according to our captain and also our code enforcement. There are some stuff that still needs to be, you know, keep up with and hopefully you will keep up with the area, the hotels and some of the difficulties that you have. You had also mentioned that you are going to whether increase the walls or put some barbed wire from preventing from the people from the wash coming in. Hopefully you would, uh, volunteers to do that yourself versus, uh, having our commissioners to put some conditions. I'd like to see, um, hopefully it's just only been under a year. Hopefully in the futures, it continues to make improvements and, um, that we monitor, just like whether it's six months or a year from now, just to see how, you know, that, um, operation, operation is moving smoothly or not. We like to see the right directions that you're moving, like currently with working with our officers and our, um, code enforcement, that it is making, um, improvement. So, um, with that said and done, um, I'd like to see if we can perhaps bring this back, whether it's, um, if our, um, commissions agreed, whether it's six months or a year from now, um, see if there's significant improvements.
Six or maybe less?
Here's, here's what I would, I would say, you know, to the extent, look, I I I think one of the one of the issues that's ongoing is obviously they're, they're going through this permitting process. Jo- Joanne, do you know how much longer that's going to take for for that stuff to get taken care of, so that's no longer a code enforcement issue or or do we have a timeline on that?
Um, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take them to finalize it. I I wouldn't, I don't think that it's gonna be longer, it shouldn't be longer than a couple of months.
Is it building or planning?
It's in building.
For building, because if it's building, I think they have
every six months that they have to call for inspections or it can last up to five years.
But we went out there.
We have to confirm that.
Almost done.
I'm sorry?
They were almost done.
Okay, so hopefully after that's done.
So conceptually, if, uh, here's, here's, here's what I'm thinking is look, if there aren't any more code enforcement issues and that, and that is buttoned up, you know, over the next six months, you know, from my standpoint, I don't see any need to have this come back. But if there are issues, if there are additional issues that are identified, then I think it comes back in six months. I I just don't want to have a hearing on nothing. That's, that would be my, my biggest concern. So if if we're having, if if we're in a situation where, um, you know, six months goes by, no more code enforcement issues, you know, and and there's no other issues that are identified by staff that, you know, frankly merit our attention and our time. You know, I I say at that point in time, there's no need to come back in six months. But if there is in six months and we can set a date certain, six months from now, or or give or take, um, and there are ongoing issues, I I think, I I think we bring this exact same item back then and then we talk about, okay, do we need to do a modification? Do we need to, you know, look at revocation or anything like that? I think that makes the most sense rather than having staff, you know, waste time doing a report, particularly if they're on the right track and and doing, uh, doing what a responsible business owner is doing. Uh, that, that would be my perspective on it.
I think it's not wasting the staff's time to do this, I think what we do need to have is something that I had asked for before. There needs to be a report of any and all businesses in the city of West Covina that are having, uh, problems with with any, um, nuisances, so we, we've yet to put that on an agenda to find out, you know, that once a month, we should have a, a report, what are the problems we're having, is there repetitive, is there, are they repetitive within, uh, any business, you know, or if any of the businesses are having problems, maybe they can report it so it could come before the commission. Let the residents speak, let us, you know, know what's going on. At this point, we don't know what's going on until it happens, something like this. You know, we're, we we just, you know, we just see these walls and we don't hear anything, you know, we can't patrol the city.
So it it has been, I mean, the current owner has been making improvement and I like to see that continue. And the only way to see that is to perhaps bring that back within six months or a year from now. This way we can monitor, make sure that that's in and within that given time, we can reevaluate to see if the current operator is moving the, toward the right directions that we like to see.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan, I'd like to see six months with the input of code enforcement, if it becomes necessary, and PD. But I also, through the chair, I'd like to ask Captain Plunkett to come back, I just have one more question, please.
Yes, yes.
Chair, before, before the, uh, the commission takes a motion or action, just please check to make sure there is no one in the audience that wants to make public comment.
Alright.
We'll basically open it up, the public hearing meeting again.
Thank you, Captain Plunkett, just the question about, uh, the flock camera, do you think there would be any benefit to considering that in that location?
I'm a, I'm a fan of flock cameras, so I I would think there'd always be a benefit, but, um, Mr. Lewis brought up a good point, there is one down the street. The more cameras in the city, the better. Whether you make that a requirement on a business or not isn't up to me.
But in general, our data shows that the the ones we have available have been
Yeah, but It shows that it leads to a significant amount of arrests and the 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 crime data that you're deterring is very hard to determine. Every time you arrest somebody who's out committing crimes, you're actually deterring more crimes from occurring, so to to compute that number is really difficult to give you a what has it deterred, but um, I would say from a law enforcement standpoint, not only does it help us catch, um, criminals, but it also helps us deter crime in the city for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up on that. You know, one of, one of the things that I'm concerned about is once you get into oversaturation and things like that, um, particularly in areas that are high crime, you just end up having scenarios where people just take off their plates and that's that. And, you know, realistically, I think that's a, that's a big concern, I mean, I think that's probably one of the reasons why, you know, that, uh, that unsolved murder that we have going on or that occurred a few years ago on the south side of the city, on on Amar and Azusa, is probably still unsolved, just because that person probably didn't have a plate. And
We didn't have flock cameras at the time.
Well, you know, besides, besides, I mean, even if you have passive stuff, you know, unfortunately, when people know they're monitored, they disguise themselves, that's, that's
the biggest.
Our description data is very helpful for investigations as well. And the flock cameras do pick that up. So it's not.
Yeah.
It just because somebody, I mean, people take their plates off now and I get your point. You're right.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not.
Cameras still help us.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a penicillin, unfortunately.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess the, the other question is, um, in terms of, in terms of leads on apprehensions of suspects, what, what data do you have on that? I mean, in terms of that being a helpful tool? Cause that, that's, that's actually a question that, that I've asked and I haven't really gotten an answer on.
From flock data, how it.
From flock data.
How many arrests it's led us to?
Yeah.
We have that data at the police department.
Oh, you do? Okay. I would, I'd love to see it, um, at, at some point in time. If you can pass it along to staff and get it to me, I'd love to see it just cause again, we've, we've kind of adopted this wholesale practice of, you know, like for, for the gas stations and stuff like that of, of making that a requirement for, uh, for alcohol permitting and stuff like that. So I, I wanted to see whether or not there was any efficacy behind it.
Thousand percent. I think you'd be very pleased. It's a, it's a great tool and resource that we're using in the city for.
I'm, I'm honestly glad to hear it. I honestly have, have nothing to say negative or positive on it. That's why I'm saying I question the efficacy because no one has been talking about it. No one's been publicizing that data. So.
Sure. We'll, uh, we'll work to get you that information.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about camera, how much does those camera cost?
They, it's a subscription basis. They cost around, I, I can't quote the exact price, but I believe they're around $3,000 a year per camera.
Per camera?
Yeah. And there's an installation fee that goes with that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Captain Plunkett.
Welcome.
Ah, the corporate profits.
Okay.
Now we could check.
Um, do we have any that want, anyone else that wants to come up?
In favor or against? Anyone out there?
Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And do we have commission discussion again? Does anyone want to add anything else?
Well, I, well, I'll reiterate, I kind of agree with everything that was said, but I still want to maintain what, what I would like to see is the addition of a flock camera and security. Now to Commissioner Lewis's point, um, I definitely wouldn't want to put them out of business, but I think that they could also have some leeway in determining, you know, their own security needs, um, especially because I, I'm gonna disagree with what the owner said about the hotel. The hotels I'm familiar with are seeing, um, close to full occupancy. So I really believe that keep, uh, keeping that property in better order and, and safer is possible and is what's needed.
A flock camera is cheaper than a security guard.
Right. Yeah. It sure, it sure will be. Um, but, uh, I think the difficulty I'm having with, with the comments are that I just don't see the lack of demand in the hotel industry. I think if, if it's done right, um, the demand is there. So that's, um, I.
I think there's a couple of things that's going on. I mean, okay, we can't really blame everything on COVID, but it has affected the tourist industry.
Yeah, it's five years ago.
And, and also the fact that the operator was not this particular new owner. And if it's dated inside, it does take times to, you can say, renovate all the new, bring it up to date to all the 70 something, um, rooms. So with, they're working toward it with our building departments improving some of the rooms. So hopefully within that, and we keep an eye out, hopefully with the, with the new hotel, the bring-ins, new clients, and hopefully the new operators operate the place much better and hopefully best in the future.
Good, good points. I think we need the, the right operator, you know, because, uh, not everyone has the same business mindset or, or skillset. Uh, but I think, um, as I mentioned already, that I, I think, I, I know that could be done better and properly. So, um, the, I mean, some of the issues we talked about that I'm, I'm happy to hear from our PD and code enforcement are resolved. I just hope those weren't temporary Band-Aids that we have to keep revisiting this issue for because, um, I, I really think a, a good hard look at whether or not this, this permit is, should still be active, needs to be kept in focus. Um, and that's why I think with the input of our code enforcement, we should consider maybe not a date certain, but to really have a hard look at this within six months. Cause I, I don't want this to be a revolving door of nonsense, really.
I agree. We should revisit this in six months. Um, I don't think that we should, you know, polls turn green in one day, you know, you know, this, this, I think the, the cleanup has to be consistent and, um, we could take it from there. I mean, uh, from that point, if there are, you know, that, you know, we could, you know, I, I'm not sure if the calls of the improvement's gonna happen with code enforcement, if they're gonna get any less than they are right now. It seems, you know, from what the captain has said, that, that's pretty standard with that type of business. But, um, there are other things that we can do to improve it. If, if there needs to be a flock camera, we can discuss it maybe in six months.
So Joanne, do we need to make a motion or can we just, uh, you're gonna, do we need to vote on this to bring, uh?
It's totally up to us if we want to make a motion with conditions right now or if we want to bring it back.
What do you say? Do you?
I, I still, I, I wanna, I'm, my motion still stands for flock cameras and security as added conditions. That, that would be my motion.
May I just clarify? Are you asking for it to return for a noticed modification of the UUP former, formal process? Or are you wanting to bring it back and have a further discussion on it? They're two very different things. So, and, and just to be clear so that staff knows what to do and what process is being proposed. Um, when you do make the motion, please make it very like specific as to whether you want to bring it back for a formal modification of the, of the use permit, um, to add additional conditions or to just bring it back for a status check to see if, you know, the condition, the, the code enforcement cases and problems have resolved as they continue, um, to, to, you know, work on it. And it's just unclear from how it was phrased.
Okay. So what, what I would, what I'm suggesting is to modify the conditions today to add the flock camera. Uh, is that doable today?
It would require formal notice, uh, for modification process. Yes.
Okay.
Correct. This is a discussion item and public comment on a discussion item, but to, to do a modification of the conditions of that use permit, it need, requires a certain amount, period of notice, the, you know, property owner needs notice as well as additional other notice requirements. So it's a much more formal process where due process has to be observed. So we cannot do that today.
Got it. Okay.
So why don't we bring it back six months from now and with the notice regarding the CCT flock camera?
I, I think that's a good plan. Bring it back in six months. And in four months, I would like to request, um, if we could have an update from our code enforcement and PD as to any developments from now till then.
And hopefully by then, if the owner and operator listen to all of this and perhaps say if they make a decisions to do it themselves, then that would already take care of some of the thing that we're gonna do in six months. Decisions that we're gonna make in six months.
Fine bringing it back in six months. Uh, you know, the, the question I have is if we are bringing it back with the intention of imposing, you know, a flock camera on this motel, you know?
It's just a notice and we can vote on it six months from now.
Yeah, but we're, we're doing a formal public hearing on, on.
Six months from now.
That particular issue. Correct. That, that would be, that's what the proposal.
But it's not noticed right now. So even in, within six months, when it brings it back, then we can either vote on it. It's a public hearing by then. It is not today.
I, I guess I, 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 I understand, um, here's, here's what I think makes a little more sense. Um, and perhaps, um, perhaps rather than going through that expenditure, what we, what we ought to do is potentially direct staff to inquire whether or not, um, there is an ability for businesses to voluntarily have flock cameras on their, on their site. And if that is a possibility, if, if this business owner would be interested in participating in such a program and then bringing it back as just a, 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 a discussion item so that we can actually assess what the situation is as far as, um, whether or not these code enforcement violations are actually ongoing concerns that we need to concern ourselves with. Because if we're, if we're talking about modification right now with the intention of modifying it, uh, for a specific purpose, namely the flock cameras, I think, I, I think we kind of pigeonhole ourselves. And, but the thing is, is that we, we all know from the last, from the last meeting that we had on this, that, that this gentleman took over in July, he had to forcibly get the prior management company off of his site. So we know there's growing pains that have had to have occurred because his former, the, the former management company was going through and was utilizing this voucher program nonsense. And unfortunately, that's, that seems to be the nexus of all these issues. So, um, or of the vast majority of the issues according to, according to code enforcement and the police department. So from my standpoint, it doesn't make sense to, to not have any data, kind of go in blind. Um, look, if, if they're, realistically, if, if this is an ongoing problem, we're not talking modification in six months. We're talking something probably far more onerous than that and not just for flock camera stuff, right? So I, I think.
That's why we're monitoring it for the next six months or so.
But we're not monitoring it. We, under, under, under the motion that's, that's before us.
Improvements continue. This is what we're doing.
We are not making any decisions, even though it comes back in six months. There's still a vote that needs to be going on, but at that time it would be public hearing. Today it is not. So even within six months, the conditions are still stand and we still need to vote at that point in time. Or in six months, we can revisit these issues and then have public hearings. So either way.
I think it sounds like you're putting the cart before the horse.
Revisit your, um, your recommendation was to Commissioner Lewis, you said, get a report from city staff and then evaluate?
Correct. My suggestion would be get a report from city staff in six months so we can see whether or not all of the, all the compliance issues that, that were in existence are gone. We already know that there's one issue. One issue deals with building. From what we understand, that should probably be resolved within the next six months. So to the extent that there aren't any further issues, we can address whether or not we need to, you know, add a, or consider having a future public hearing to add additional requirements at that point in time. Because again, um, we, if.
Let's be.
Walking flock cameras, that's exactly what we're asking for. We're asking to come back in six months, whether it's the staff giving us a report or that, or we put it on the agenda, but that's what we're asking for. The same difference.
Let me clarify something. So the building permit is not an issue. It's a permit that they're continuing, they're working on right now. So with that, whether it's, um, whether it's, uh, they're working on it or not working on it, that is a permit that was issued to them right now.
No, that's not the issue. The issue was un, unpermitted building. They're, they're going through and they're correcting that by going through and getting building permits.
They have a building permit.
That's why it's an open issue.
Chair, if I may, um, if the commission wishes to bring this back and have a report prior to directing staff to simultaneously move forward with a modification and mailing all the notices to every occupant, every owner, every, you know, within those distances, incurring the city's cost to make those publications. Now, just be, just so that we are very clear to staff on what they need to do. And I, I do think that there are two different things to, number one, get a report and then make that decision to do the formal process where the city does have to incur costs to do all the mailings, um, identifying all the properties, the owners, the people who need to get those notices, publish in the paper, et cetera. Like, all of those things are like the formal process. So, so the confusion is with the direction that comes to staff is, are you going to have the status report and the modification at the same time, which means the city will have to prepare in advance to send all the mailers, do all the publications as if it is a modification hearing. And at the modification hearing, you will hear the status update and maybe not have it. And then the city just kind of did all of that. Or is it to have two pieces? And that, that's the clarification.
Great, great question. Uh, from my standpoint, I think that will take too long and it's confusing. I'd rather notice it, have the meeting and give us the flexibility to make a decision. And, and for staff, um, so, so is that clear with, at least with commission and?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay. If we are making emotions, motion one would be, um, do we do the six months and then bring back the notifications?
No, I, I would like to just schedule it and six months with notifications to give us a status update as well as have a public hearing at that time that gives us the opportunity to act if we need to or not act if we don't need to.
So this would be motion, uh, could we have a second? If there's a second, please. Seeing none, do we have a second motion? Motions to just, uh, get the report in six months and then determine at that point in time. I'll make that motion. Uh, for motions to get a report in six months. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castiano?
Aye.
Vice Chair, um, sorry, Chair Hang?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
So six months from now would be in August.
Uh, so now that we have a motions, hopefully the owner or operator listens to what's going, uh, earlier, our commission discussions and hopefully making some decisions themselves. Um, moving on to, um, commission reports, comments and miscellaneous items. Does anyone have any comments or anything to report or offer comments on?
Uh, I just, I just wanted to see if, um, if staff can provide information to the commission just purely on an informational basis as to whether or not, um, the flock program or the flock camera program is something that is available to any business that wishes to participate or whether or not that's something that, you know, has to be imposed or something pursuant to some, uh, some permitting process that, that, uh, this commission or, uh, or council so designates.
I think any business with that many calls should be required to have flock cameras. That's just too many calls.
Given that, uh, Captain Pinkin earlier had mentioned that he does have a report that can be, uh, interesting to look at. So instead of just sending it to Commission Lewis, perhaps send it to all of us?
No, I, I meant send it to the whole commission.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. I, I wasn't, wasn't just to me. I, I wanted everyone to have that information.
All right. So we're looking forward to see that report.
I have one, one more request of staff. If we could get, um, ownership data for the last decade for that hotel?
Okay.
As well as TOT data, please.
Is, then this information, did, did you want it presented in, with, in six months with that report? Or did, do you want that as soon as possible?
As soon as possible, please. And, and the TOT data could be just, uh, two years, please.
I could make it a little longer.
Sure.
Thank you. The tenant, the TOT.
Three. It's up to you. I mean, I'm flexible. I just want to make it reasonable for staff.
I don't know how hard that information's gonna come by, but.
I'll ask for three years and if that's not possible, then two.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else has, um, miscellaneous items from commission reports and comments? If not, we're moving to community development director's report. Joanne, do you have any items to report?
Um, yes. So on February 19th is Toyota West Covina's grand opening. Um, that's next, um, that's next Wednesday.
West Covina grand opening?
Yes.
Oh, Toyota. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Oh, Toyota, okay. Okay, thank you.
And also, I was just told that the TOT data is is confidential.
Oh, okay.
So it's not something that we
Can't be discussed.
We can't report.
It's not a public record?
No.
Okay.
Any other method we could try to determine occupancy?
Yeah, how about more generally, our our TOT data as a city over the past three years?
I can I can check to see what we can report, and if if it's something that we can report, I'll def I will bring it to the planning commission.
Perfect. Yes, that's that's really what my what I'm thinking is
Trends.
Didn't compute that it's such low occupancy. So that's any data you could pull, please.
Okay.
But normally, generally, the hotel's occupancy is 75%, because the last time the hotel was here, a couple of years back, this is before COVID. I don't know if COVID is to really be blamed for any of the tourists. However, the hotel, a couple of hotels that had their renovations, that's across the street on the north side.
But they got some money from the government, for sure.
On the north side of the hotel, their occupancy rate, they mentioned, this is before COVID, was about 75% occupancy. So
That seemed right.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure, but I'm not in the hotel industry, but it seems it may seem a little less. I don't know, it's just the impressions that I got in the some of the business newspaper that I read. It hasn't picked up to the peak yet, mainly through Disneyland, but I don't know, the entire, the entire industry for even California. Okay, community director, development directors report, or Joanne, do you have more for the
That that was part of it, and also city council action.
Uh huh.
The city council has approved the Mercedes-Benz precise plan and related zone change for the construction of the Mercedes-Benz, new Mercedes-Benz car dealership at the last city council meeting. So the second reading for the zone change ordinance is scheduled for for the first meeting in March.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any city council actions to report, other than
That was that was it. Oh, and also, not actions yet, but upcoming city council items for the next city council meeting, it would, the city council will be reviewing the development code update cleanup.
When would that be?
That would be, that's tentatively scheduled for, well, the 18th. It's scheduled for the 18th.
Okay. February 18th, right now, March 18?
February 18th.
Okay, thank you.
Next Tuesday.
Okay, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Madam Chair?
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone.